All right, let's open the meeting. Town House, welcome to the Town House meeting for May 2nd, 2018 in the library community room. We'll start the meeting by the pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence.
The pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence to reflect on our views here and remember all our first responders, military personnel, home employees. Thank you. Now we're going to announce, in accordance with Madison general laws, we are taping the meeting. Does anybody else tape in the meeting? Item three, town council fiscal 2018 budget. So we discussed prior that we're looking at, no one has any questions on the line item budget that we went over last meeting. So today we will be looking at just some of our general fund sources, our capital projects, and our supplemental budget requests for 2019. And we will start with the town clerk, item 160 on supplemental 2019 requests. So we had 17,304 additional part-time staff for the clerk's office. Let's talk about that particular expansion. And as Denise noted, possibly the best way to address this may be peak times for licensing. I know I had spoken with Tom about his position, and there is some concern that not only peak time, but there's some additional responsibilities with licensing that have gotten added on. And when, well, Tom, you can comment on this, that when we did the separation to clerk of the council and clerk, and treasurer collector was separated out, they actually lost a half-time, half-time person? Half-time person. That person stayed with the collector treasurer side. So anybody have any comment on this? Let's talk about it.
Can I, before you comment, tell me what I'm going to recommend for next year, and I have not even, it'll be a surprise to Sarah, these election expenses are an every-year expense.
Right. And we have no choice.
I would like to establish a budget just for elections so that that budget reflects, these aren't supplementals, these are necessary.
And actually, Denise, just to touch on that, I know we had a discussion about it this morning. So the most we usually do is three elections in a year, usually.
Well, four, if you have a preliminary, local election, and then a state primary and a state election.
So the most we do is four, which the total was usually around 8,000, so that would be like 32,000 as a line item.
Exactly.
If we don't end up doing four elections, the money that's left could be used for certain other things that come up in the clerk's office. One of the things that we discussed this morning was an issue that we've kind of talked about over the course of time was advertising for bylaw postings, which that money could go there and anything left over could be returned to the general fund. So maybe worth looking at funding that as a line item in the clerk's budget.
I totally agree.
For that total amount of 32,000, and anything left we can use if we need. And of course, we have, coming up, we're going to have some significant bylaw changes based on the feedback that we got from department heads. So that's going to be a pretty significant point for us to make some expenditures, which now we have to do a special funding out of the general fund every time we're going to post one of those, because we don't have a line item for that either. Or if we do, it's never enough.
Underfunded.
Because we don't know how much it's going to be to post each one. And we won't know if that change for the summary has actually been approved until the ballot question is actually answered in the election, so.
In the AG's office, this afternoon, I contacted them right after the election yesterday, and they want to make a decision on that this afternoon, so it'll give us plenty of time to get that language out of the ballot.
So I think that may be the best way to go with that particular, those particular expenditures.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, because it, in no way is it supplemental, it's mandated or required to fulfill state and local election obligations.
Right. Doing the preliminary may not be every year. We did have one this year. Next year we may not have it, but you don't, don't want a budget for it.
But we can do a five-year, you know, look back and then establish that budget with what we find is, is kind of the, there will be.
Well, your presidential years, you're going to be higher, so every fourth year you're going to be looking, you might want to move it up a little bit.
But then it's just within that budget rather than reflecting on the clerk, oh gee, how come they're so much higher this year? So as an aside, what I did tell Kevin this morning is, some of the things that I'm going to recommend going forward are things that I've done in the past, but really, as the new guy, I did not want to come in, and there were enough changes going on without having to have staff adapt to my way of budgeting. This will be, next year will be a mix of my way and what they're used to, that we'll do things like fine-tune something like this election line, you know? So we'll be doing things a little better next year.
And just one little small fact, if you notice the police cost in there, as I spoke to Tom at the, at the polls yesterday, we, we're not even in control of the number of police officers we have to have at the polls. That's a state requirement, so, so for even for a small election like yesterday, in number of people, you still have to have, was it four?
Four.
Four officers, yeah.
And it's a third of our cost, but you're right, that's another thing that's mandated.
And also, when you look back, you're going to find a year that we had six elections, but I just wanted to throw that in.
I agree with what everything has been said here, and that this should not be a supplemental as you indicated, Denise. And in the future, if it means going over a threshold that's set, and as in this year, it will be at 2%, then it is what it is.
Okay, we'll move down that, that road then.
So back to our additional part-time staff. Anybody have any thoughts on that one?
How many, can you quantify peak times?
Well, there's not really, there's peak times, but it's almost like there's steady times throughout the whole year. And on top of that, you know, the licenses that we have to do mandatory renewals in the October, November, December timeframe.
That's a big peak.
That's a big period. And then the dog licenses from January 1st to the beginning of April, considered a peak time. And then with the elections, it depends which year it is. You're going to get more people wanting absentee ballots, more people wanting to register to vote, so you have to keep the VIRS updated. And, you know, with the vital records, what's happened in two in town is, Islam Meadow seems to be a landing spot for assisted living facilities, which is great. I mean, it's good, it's good for us, but now with the, of the reserve, Luburn Acres and the three other ones over here, there's a lot more, you know, death certificates have gone up, and a lot more requests from funeral homes of death certificates. So it's, it's steady throughout the whole year, and on top of that, you know, you said with the peaks, you know, it's, you know, we're down to three people, and we do have the, the responsibilities of the licensing now, and all the clerk of the council and setting up and make sure you guys are well supported, so, you know, you don't want to find ourselves short and not, not being able to do things and missing anything.
So how many hours is the position now?
Uh, 19.
We don't have it now. Because it stayed with.
It was a half position.
It was a half position that stayed with the collector treasurer's office.
I look at it in a simple way, and this is just a replacement of staff that has moved on to a different location. So I would be in support of that.
You're not in foe. You're not even asking for what you lost.
No.
You're just asking for part.
Well, no, what you lost was a half.
Well, it was a half.
He lost a half, so it would be replacing that to a half.
Okay.
Now, there might be, and I've said this to anybody that's asking for full-time, and we talked about it, and we might have reduced some of them, this might be something that this year we say, let's just replace what we have. Let's, let's just go to, if, if it was a half-time, let's see how we handle that, and then it may come back next year, and we might be asking for a full-time if, if we still find that there's a gap.
Yeah, good point.
I'm good with that half-time employee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you even have room? Put another body in there?
Well, we got to look at that too.
A shoehorn.
Is there a weight requirement, weight maximum? Can, can, I'm asking this question, can that whole move be undone? Is it?
Uh, that's, we'll figure it out.
For another day?
I know we looked at some issues in there, and there's some space issues that we're talking about addressing with some space that's available that's not being used, and identifying some areas where we can remove the space. So, looking totally at the budget, I know the maintenance fee for the codification software, this particular supplemental item 160, the maintenance fee for the codification software, the codification software can actually come off because we're looking at.
Community compact.
Community compact grant for that, so that 2795 figure will come off of that total. Everything else is elections and the part-time worker.
So, not to interrupt, but what about the 9820, is that what you're speaking of?
No, the.
2795.
Oh, I got it.
That's going to the community compact grant?
Correct.
No, not 2795. If you look at my notes, 1,600 of it is the memory cards for the voting machines. So that needs to stay. That goes in that election budget.
Oh, sorry, 1195, correct.
So it's the 1195 plus the 9820.
That's it, so 9820, so.
And so.
What's the separate line item for the 9820 below that?
That 9820 is actually purchasing the software, which is probably a good idea, but again, we're looking at.
It's an excellent idea.
We're looking at the grant money from best practices that we got into with the lieutenant governor's office to purchase that software, so we can remove that 9820 and that 1195.
We don't have to address that now.
Not, not right now.
Okay.
I, I would just like to make another comment, as it relates to the purchase of software for any department, I think we need to be, when we ask a department head to give us a price, it's not only for the actual retail purchase, we need input from Mr. Quimby on maintenance fees and any other recurring costs down the road.
Tom is looking at me, because I think we just had that conversation.
Because that is a deceiving figure to the naked eye when you just look at the retail cost of it.
Right. And we just had a presentation that, going forward, those presentations will be to us in January and include the IT person. Anything that goes onto our system, even if it's just, you know, off-boarded software kind of stuff, it still needs to go through Ryan. He's the coordinator of IT, and for instance, the software that, that Tom is looking at, he's looking at it for his department. Ryan said planning, you know, zoning bylaws would also fit in that codification. That's why we're going to try for the community compact grant. We're also going to make sure that every, every department is addressed, so.
And for us too, I think it would be helpful when you're, you know, looking at a piece of software that we may or may not be familiar with, to, you know, really get a little like sense of the ROI, and then what the implementation plan is, and then what the deployment plan is, because we have a lot of stuff here that we don't use, and we don't use it particularly well. So it's kind of, kind of intuitive to buy a piece of software and then not use it to its fullest. So I just want to make sure we're accountable to the plan. If we're going to spend money, then let's, let's get some value out of it.
And I'm in, Denise, I'd like your comment. I think that in the past, some of the software issues that I've worked on, were not always supported by IT, nor were, was IT involved in discussions. And I think that's an invaluable piece that needs to be included in any software purchase to make sure that we have support and buy-in from our, the head of IT. He's going to have it on his platform, he knows how it's going to integrate, and he knows, I think currently you pick up all the maintenance costs for all the software purchased.
Majority.
So it'd be good to know what those are going to be ongoing and be part of that negotiation.
Right, and there's still some splintered pieces where, for instance, this was being the, the maintenance was being budgeted under town clerk. We need to look at that whole thing.
Keep it on.
It gives us a better picture, if it's all in one place, how much the maintenance is for all these pieces, and comparative as well, you know? How come that one is so much higher than the others? And that would be Ryan's expertise.
All right, so we can, I'll entertain a motion to approve the town clerk budget minus the 11,015 for the codification so, software and the 11, well, plus included in that figure is the maintenance fee for the codification software.
Yeah, same.
Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
141, assessor. Ryan, can you help me understand what the software is for this assessor's thing? Do you know about that? Because I don't really have a good grasp on what that is, but.
So it's not a, it's not a regular maintenance upgrade, it's, it's like basically changing the whole backend. When we purchased the software and they installed it, they put it on an older database engine, and now we need to bring it up to the modern, the old Microsoft SQL database engine, safe and pervasive.
Today's technology as opposed to dinosaur?
Exactly. And it's, it's kind of outside of normal maintenance, because we have to buy Microsoft SQL licenses, which are not cheap.
Okay.
And that's included in this price, the micro, the SQL license?
Yep.
Ryan, when we purchased this, this was a project about four years ago, when the assessor's office upgraded, assessor's office upgraded to this new software. So this is something that we purchased at that time that was outdated? Were we given a discount on that, and now we're paying for it?
My understanding was there was issues with the newest version at that time, so they installed a more stable, older version. And now we're, you know, the older version's out of support, and we need to move to the newer version.
So if I understand a part of your question, and Ryan, you may know better than I do, but I think what they had prior to Vision was a proprietary software that dealt with the previous assessment group. And they went from that to Vision, which is a very stable, well-known.
It's a much better supported platform. The previous software we had, there was issues with some assessments and some data, and you call them and say, well, why did this happen? Oh, we don't know, but it's fixed. To me, that's not really a good answer.
So Vision is a, a good software, but I don't know what the involvement was that we would have gotten it on an old platform, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So again, making sure that we're.
It's a good example, because IT wasn't involved in that implementation.
So you're in support of this?
Absolutely.
This will work on our current platform?
Yep.
And IT's basket will be a little bigger going forward with knowing what all pieces are.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the supplemental request for assessor's office, item 141 on the supplemental.
Same.
Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Collector treasurer, item 145, 15,767, change the part-time position to full-time position, which we received a backup document from. So I'll just read this a little bit so everybody knows. On the request for a part-time admin assistant to move to full-time, disemploysment of functions will be countercovers, telephone covers, and dispersing a weekly warrant. Prior to department division, there were five and a half staff members answering the phones and taking a turn at the counter, and they currently have three and a half. Assistant treasurer should not be ready with counterperson to the segregation duties and controls. He's the final person to balance all payments and transactions. If he's removed from the counter, they'll be down to the two and a half staff members to serve the residents. The new cash policy, the volume of foot traffic has increased. The collector staff have written 370 cash receipts since the new policy for fire permits, dump stickers, dog licenses, marriage death, birth certificates, and other miscellaneous items. The fire department has requested that the collector's office take responsibility for the sale of fire permits with this extra staff. This would be possible to do that. Dump stickers, it's also been suggested that the office sell the dump stickers with extra staff, that would be possible to take on. Those two, I'd just like to comment on that right now. The way it works is they go in to pay at the collector treasurer's office, then have to go back to whatever department it is with the receipt. So if I want a burn permit, I have to come to town hall, pay, then go to the fire department and show them my receipt. Or the same thing with being in the building and going to the dump, DPW for a dump permit, you have to pay and then go upstairs with your receipt to show that you can get it. So it's been a little inconvenient, to say the least.
Not customer-friendly.
Yeah, that's user-friendly.
Can an individual?
Understanding though, I mean, sorry, Kathy.
No, it's okay.
Understanding the need for revision in the cash policy based on some of our circumstances, but unforeseen, I think.
Now we need to, now we need to tweak though.
Go ahead, Kathy, sorry.
Can an individual pay by check?
Yes.
Directly, for instance, if I was going for a fire, fire burning permit?
But how much is a burning permit?
I don't know.
Five? So some, some of them are like $3, you know, so.
That would seem silly to.
Can we just eliminate the fee? You charge us one $5 and go into two different departments? Is it really, man, how much do we generate and?
I think this year the total was 350 permits, so 1,500, 1,500 and $50.
Seems kind of crazy.
Well, bringing it all into the collector's office will.
Won't stop shopping.
Yeah, it'll all be there.
But then, looking at that, if we're expending money at a part-time rate of $15,767, we're not making that money back at permit fees.
Maybe it's better to drop the fees.
No, just.
Does that affect you because you don't know who's burning?
We need, we, we need a law, they need to have a permit, and we also need to know the day that they're burning, but they also need to get permission that day, because some days, burning, burning's not allowed. Either it's too windy, too dry, or the relative humidity in the air movement creates a health issue with the smoke staying too long. So most of the days, burning's not allowed, it's not the fire department that's saying it's not allowed, it's DEP. One of the, one of the, my, my concerns might be a bit strictly the clerk's office or the collector's office issuing the permits, it would, weekends might irritate a few residents on the other side of the coin who don't have that ability to come down during the week to buy the permit with the clerk's office, so.
So Paul, if we did the fees, if we eliminate fees.
Then they just come to you.
And they just come to you, how would that affect you? What is that 1,500, that goes to you?
That goes to general fund. Been going to general fund forever, I'm not sure exactly how Sarah and all the, I'm not sure exactly where it goes from there.
I'm just out of curiosity, is it something that you guys use directly, or, but I mean, you spend $15,000 to make 1,500, seems silly.
What do other towns charge, do we know? Like Long Meadow or Hampton?
Long Meadow is five, Hampton, I believe is five. They all follow the rules, they all interpret the rules a little differently. Hampton actually goes out and inspects your pile before you light it, so there's a bigger cost on the fire department's responsibilities on that. We, we don't, this year, the burn season's over, and we didn't have any, any issues this year with burning season, which is a good thing.
Do we do checks and, you know, let's say a person is a citizen, happens to have served time as an arsonist or something? Do we have like the list thing, no, 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 can't have that?
No. We have a few frequent flyers from years past. When they come in, we make sure we remind them of the specific rules. And typically, we'll get a phone call from a neighbor saying, you know, Don Anderson burning today, has a ton of smoke coming behind his yard, so we tell him, Don, this is not for burning. Brush, which is allowed by the statute, it's for burning weeds, which we have to remind them of the specific responsibilities. And we've actually gone out, someone's picked up, had issues like that where, we're sorry, you can't burn anywhere, you could use this, we need to remove the permit. And most people don't feel upset about it. If it's specifically for brush, not for land clearing, last year, we had a farmer that cleared up some land on Meadow Brook, and he bulldozed it all into a pile and wanted to stump permit, and that would have been going for weeks. I got a permit, I know you have a permit, you're acrimonious too, but this is not within the scope of the requirements, so.
Seems to me, it seems from a safety point of view, that the whole process should be within the fire department still, because I mean, we could have. I agree. I think you should eliminate the fee and go directly to the fire department, and this is a non-issue.
I agree.
I agree with that.
I think the residents that buy the permits will probably like that, because we're working with IT, they can probably set up the permit process online on the website. Most of them only need to come in, they can just communicate.
They don't have to collect money?
Yeah, they don't have to collect money. We, we were given the swipe for the debit card or credit card, but for a $5 permit to pay it to with a DPP.
It's not worth it.
We need to make that an option for people, because nobody wants.
The important thing is that you have control of the situation, and you know who's getting the permit.
Right, that's required under the regulations, yeah.
So, if I may.
Yeah.
Right now it's a 19-hour position? This, this part-time collector treasurer position?
Correct.
It's, it's an unbenefited position, it's 19 hours?
Correct.
I know we had a discussion last, last meeting during the budget about benefits and what they add to everything. Is there, is there an option to hire another 19-hour person? Therefore, making me sound cheap and avoiding benefits, but, but also avoiding benefits and, you know, saving the town some money and still having the same timeframe of coverage, it would seem.
Well, in talking to Dawn about it, the, the nice thing about having the clerk position there was, they were able to, not so much Jeannie, but Mary would, she was at the counter a lot. So losing just the clerk staffing being there has, has lessened the amount of people that they had at the counter. So I would think possibly, I can, I can talk to Dawn about that.
It's just a thought.
And see if that's practical, and have an answer to you.
Yeah, and back, you'll see, it should be. Back to the original point of, you know, we made a move, sounded good on paper, and now he's in a shoebox. Well, I don't even know how you're going to put a third party.
I don't even.
Body into that location, and now we're adding an additional staff because we split that group up. And they were helping each other with coverages and things like that. And I, yeah, to Paul's point, I would not be in favor of making this a full-time position. I'm not even sure we need another half-time position at this point where we can either figure out, either reconsolidate resources and share, or don't. But either way, I mean, I, I, you know, to make it a full-time position, we're not really sure just for a few little things here, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not feeling that one.
Well, just, if you look at the second bullet that she had, prior to the department division, there were five and a half staff members answering the phones. Mary was one of those five and a half.
I would argue.
Now they're three and a half.
I would actually argue, if you looked at that, that's not a factual, that's not as factual as it seems, just because.
It's confusing to me, I don't know, I didn't count them all before.
Well, I could actually break that out, because what you have was clerk, treasurer, collector, all under one.
Right.
So you had certain employees that did clerk functions, you had certain employees that did treasurer, collector functions, and so shared responsibilities. So the number of five and a half is maybe the total that sat in that office, but not necessarily clerk, treasurer.
They were at the counter.
Right.
They could do count.
All five and a half of those staff, I know Peter Benjamin, who's the assistant treasurer, he shouldn't be at the counter, while he was at the counter prior to this request anyway.
So I don't know, is he counted as part of this five and a half?
When you drop that number to three and a half, it's really four and a half.
But they were, now there's.
So now we're saying.
Procedures in place that would.
Would, had changed or whatever, so.
That's the mystery piece.
To me, that's a sort of misleading, and I'm not saying, I mean, it's. If you count simple numbers, it is, but if you look at actual responsibility and division of responsibility, it's not quite the five and a half that it actually appears to be. And quite frankly, they ended up with a half-time employee that was only working realistically quarter-time because it was a half-time employee.
It was quarter.
A half-time employee in the clerk, treasurer, collector's office, who did quarter-time work for the clerk and quarter-time work for the treasurer, collector. So really, looking at that whole picture.
It's a complicated math.
The breakdown is pretty complicated, but it's not really, that's not really realistic numbers to me, that they've lost two staff members.
Was any of this considered before it was proposed to flip-flop the two offices?
No, the flip-flop of the two offices ended up being based on the breakout from the charter to separate the two.
I understand that, but to, though I don't, I'm not challenging the breakup.
No, no, Kathy, what ended up happening was, I think, that the finance director's request was to have payroll in all the finance people in one area. Try to make it sort of feasible.
Finance department.
Finance department all in one area, clerk, and clerk of the council in one area.
Being a smaller department at that point.
So that's kind of how that played out, because they.
And both needed some counter, you know, access for customer service, and having the clerks in the same area as the finance people at that point, now that they're split responsibilities, was really not an appropriate way to split the housing of the two different departments.
But can you have like a, like what Joe was talking about, a shared employee? Like, for instance, we know, you know, the four times of the year when taxes are due, and so there's going to be obviously more people going to the town hall for that. Be able to borrow, if you will, from the clerk's office to serve on the counter merely
Be able to borrow, if you will, from the clerk's office to serve on the counter merely to talk to people and to accept payments and so forth during this time, I think, you know.
Similar to what we did with Melissa, where she worked at the library and she worked in treasurer, collector, clerk.
Could you do a split employee between the two departments?
Yeah.
With the clerk, hard time work.
That helps with both departments with sickness coverage and things of vacation coverage.
That's one full-time for both places.
Delegate the job.
Right.
If it's worked in the past.
Yeah, I would, one person has like this, or this, the skill set for both, so they can cover, you know, any extended sick, illness, uh, vacation, and also peak times.
If we hire two part-timers to do those things, just theoretically, theoretically, if you hire one, you gotta pay benefits. If you hire two part-time, you don't have benefit expenditure.
Yeah, but we're, and we're also testing the concept of, is it necessary?
Right.
Versus, you know, a full-time, permanent employee that's now part of the union, that's, you know, that's. I'm not convinced it's a half-time position, to be honest with you, but if, if you guys are in favor of anything, I would, I guess I would support a half-time.
What about the half-time position we just approved for the clerk's office, have that also be, be the floater?
But I think we.
I wouldn't do that. What you're both gonna be having there, you're gonna pay benefits when you don't have to. If you hired a part-time nineteen-hour person.
You're making that a permanent person.
This person.
Well, if you give them halftime hours there and halftime hours another place, that makes it a full-time.
Quarter-time. No, just basically work within their halftime hours.
Right. Just the responsibilities.
Only as needed.
As needed.
Their primary job is town clerk, clerk's office, and as it gets busy on the others during the, during the four times a year where tax bills are due, or we're doing a, you know, preliminary voting or something, they can move over here, because I don't believe the clerk's offices would be as, as busy as they used to be, because they'll be coming, during May first, August first, uh, November first, and February first. You know, that's gonna be peak time during the, um, collector's office, and then that person can, can, can cover on the desk.
If I can, I'd like to interject, uh, let's, I'd like to step back and go right back to the beginning where, uh, the finance department was joined together. What about the two and a half people that are in the finance department already? Why can't they take on additional responsibilities and step up at those peak times?
Which, which two and a half are you talking about?
Well, you have Olga, you have Terry, and you have Melissa, the other Melissa, that's.
They, they can't handle money if they're the ones that are accounting for the money, it's a payroll, one is a payroll specialist, she is the whole-time payroll. It's a lot of payroll. And, um, Olga is the assistant accountant, she does not handle money, nor should she.
But they're all bonded.
Well, being bonded doesn't mean that you put them in a precarious situation of.
But they're all bonded to handle money.
So Sarah meant, it's a good point, um, so Sarah made a comment last week that that is a requirement of, that's a legal requirement, that they're not legally, is that accurate? I mean, so, so can, the question, the question is, well.
I don't know.
How would we pass our audits if that's not legal?
I, I don't know, that's, I'm asking, is that accurate?
I, I know that I have been in a situation where I was not doing what we are now doing in my previous position, and the auditor said, you need to change it. So I believe it is best practices for accounting and, um, taking in money and I.
Why, so it's an auditor's recommendation versus a legal requirement, I guess that's what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't know that it's a legal requirement, I don't know that.
Well, technically, an auditor's recommendation is probably following along, like generally accepted accounting principles or some sort of legal definition, so.
But the question is.
They're not doing it out of the kindness of their heart, or just something that they want.
My only question to that is, has it been noted in our auditor's report?
That, I don't know.
Yes.
Oh, it hasn't, okay.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
I know that for a fact.
And we're trying to, you know, find some common middle ground here, but I, I'm, I'm still struggling with, back to Kevin's assessment of the actual number of staff that are capable of doing something. We'll exclude the people and assume that we, there are certain people that cannot and should not, fine, so be it. I mean, can we get through the year without a half-time person?
Absolutely. So what you have now is a half-time person, what she's asking for is to make that position full-time, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
But is absolutely necessary, I guess is the question.
I, I can.
So can we keep it status quo for a year, assess it again?
I have already gone down that path, and if that's what y'all agree to, we'll live it.
I'm not, I'm just speaking for myself.
I don't, I don't think it's monetarily gonna be a dangerous thing where they're gonna be losing, you know, tax payments or anything, I don't think that's.
How old is the move, about four months, three months?
Four months.
Okay, so I would be in favor of sitting on this and seeing how it plays out, and as we all know, when, when there's peak times or someone's out ill, or there's heavy vacation usage in the summer, then you get into a sharing of a need, and we'll just.
Address it.
Address it for next year.
That was my recommendation for both that one and the town clerk, because they also have just moved there. And they don't have space for the person, I, you know, if we're gonna do it for one, we should probably do it for both.
I, I disagree, I think there's two different scenarios here.
I'm sorry?
There's two different scenarios here, so I would disagree with that statement. I think the clerk lost a half a person. And according to, uh, what occurred, there was a joining of the department for, I don't know what reason, but now that they're all together, they should be able to utilize the current staff in some way to make this, make this work. So I go, would go with Kathy, and that, let's let it ride out and see how it works, and if it doesn't work out, then we look at it.
Okay.
Followed through ten motion at this point to, uh, decline on.
Not add.
One, four, to five, not add that to the supplemental budget request, and hold off until there's a better assessment of need.
So move. Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
One fifty-five I T.
You have, um, updated information on, on those requests, and Ryan is here.
That's it, buddy. Thanks for coming.
So, uh, I know in looking at Ryan's actual sort of flowchart, the G I S coordinator, that is a new, newly added, right, Ryan, position?
A transfer.
A transfer from.
From Public Works.
But it's new for you to be responsible for G I S this, this year.
Yes.
Uh, that used to be Public Works' responsibility. Looking at some of the discussions that we've actually had thus far, there's some software purchases that are gonna be coming up. One is the one that we did for assessors. One will potentially be codification, which I think you're gonna be involved in at some support level, if I'm not mistaken. You had done a system analyst position request, so over the course of the last fifteen years, despite responsibilities have decreased five times, you have not added a position to I T.
Nothing, the only position that was added to I T since I started in two thousand was the network administrator position.
Okay, and then the G I S guy, but that was sort of transferred over as responsibility. And so that's just transferring a pot of money from one spot to the next. Uh, the addition of the position will help distribute mid-level support tasks, transfer from three other positions, our application analyst, system administrator, and I T director. You'll be able to document, do documentation, policy development, and focus on operational guidelines, um, and procedures. The workload is reactive and not proactive, I tend to believe that's actually almost everywhere.
The accounting functions in there.
The nature of the business. Uh, when it's filled, the position and application analyst will be responsible for conducting technology professional development, primarily, excuse me, focused for non-school departments. The system analyst position will balance the tiers of the technology department's agile workforce, and each, each level will have two positions there for the most part cross-train operation. The security training program, which is one of the recommendations from Ryan, is required, uh, by, by law, basically. Um, it's an active program that is to continue, but was cut to be budget guidelines, which, I don't know that we want I T security cut in today's day and age, would probably not be beneficial for any of us. For all, it's required for all of hires, it's preferably done on a yearly basis, and the cost of a security breach is more than a hundred and fifty dollars per record, and we have thousands of records. This will help and has helped employees prevent personal identity theft, and then the cloud backup subscription. This creates a third off-site backup of our data, current backups are on the network, one copy in town hall, one in a remote secure site, and it's not eligible for community compact due to use someone applying and receiving best practice grants previously, so. Looking overall, uh, I think we take a serious look at some of those things, I know. Expenditures, just out of curiosity, expenditures up to date, I know you have some couples line items that have money in them still?
Uh, we should, uh, not anything substantial, you know, our budget kind of doesn't really follow like a regular traditional monthly.
Bring it back in.
Because we'll end up, you know, a lot of our maintenance contracts term, we pay them in July, so that's.
So if it sits now, you're not gonna have a July rush to it.
So, um, Ryan, you have a quick question.
Sure.
So looking forward, you know, I've heard about, um, the school departments wanting to, to go to, like, a one-on-one with, you know, computers, and so that's a project we're gonna be faced with at some point to remain competitive in the school system, and Kathy and I were talking about that. So would it even be possible to support that with your current staff?
Um, with the current staff, it'd be tough, you know, right now we have about fifteen hundred Chromebooks, and we're gonna be adding, you know, don't go in this, I hope you guys will get the full presentation, but, uh, I think we're gonna get about twenty-one fifty for Chromebooks. Then there's Windows computers, Macs, a lot more, uh, other devices. Uh, we could probably do it, you know, the beauty with Chromebooks is they are easy to manage. If it were twenty-one hundred Windows or Macs, perhaps I'd need five people. But, uh, with our current staff, I think we can probably get through with it, uh, but this, this request definitely will not go away.
Thank you.
So Ryan, we talked a little yesterday, yesterday about the community compact. Did you do some additional research and you saw that we can't change our best practices and ask for new ones?
It says you can't apply for, on their website, it said you can't apply for F Y eighteen best practice grants if you apply for F Y seventeen. So we did the F Y seventeen best practice grants for inventory, I believe, through accounting, and then the H R, through H R.
So, so we're going into F Y nineteen?
It's not, it's on their website.
Yeah, I've been, I was there this morning, not a user-friendly site.
Yeah, they're moving to a new website, so some stuff's on the old site, some's on the new.
Very difficult. But that seemed to be something that we might be able to get through, community compact, that I'd need to do some checking. I can call somebody, I couldn't even find phone numbers for.
I found email addresses.
So, and, so I couldn't get that answer, we just talked about that yesterday, that there's a possibility of community compact for F Y nineteen, but we need to know that we can add to the best practices that we're trying to, um, fulfill, and I, I think that's a possibility, from the amount of reading I did.
We could actually look at, uh, conditional approval, if that's something people are interested in, then if we have the compact money available, we don't, we can use whatever funding they give us, give them free the costs of that, those expenditures.
So if they don't get any money?
Then we fund it, if they do, then we fund whatever we didn't get.
So what, do, assuming that, you know, this person potentially, and this would be the actual salary?
No, that's not community compact, the other two items.
Oh, no.
Twelve dollars.
Sorry, I'm still, I'm still on the head.
Oh, sorry.
I'm still on the head.
No, not.
So this is the actual proposed salary?
Yeah, for the grade that the position's.
The max base salary. And then what is the all-in number, assuming there, this person elects benefits, do we know what the total compensation is?
I don't have that, what, what we usually do is a, we project a family plan for the health insurance, which is about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I, I think total package is usually about a third increase to the salary line. I can get that number that we would plug in.
Seventy-seven, four, thirty-four is what we look at if we went to twenty-five thousand.
And just as an aside to, to that, or a segue to positions in general, departments need to be coming forward with the anticipated line item or the line that the salary falls on.
Whole picture.
And the whole picture, because that's, uh, we've talked about that in the school department for years, that it was really, that's not, that's a misrepresentation.
They're just picturing, here's the salary that I get, but not all the other pieces.
I have a question for Ryan, right now, besides you and Mr. Woodward, there's two others?
Three others.
Three others?
Yep, we have, uh, an applications analyst who handles M U S, and also is more of a level-two support, and then we have two, uh, level-one techs.
So I'm looking at your rationale here, and it says you haven't added a position in fifteen, about fifteen years. But I recall when I was in the school department that we did have a, an individual who worked for the department, and then she ultimately left to take another position in another neighboring district.
When we merged with the school department in two thousand and nine, uh, we also took over the two, uh, staff from there. So with the responsibility came the staff.
Okay.
So it's not really an addition, since it's more of a consolidation.
Okay.
So they were existing employees?
Correct, yeah. And part of that position too, like the point Joe had made, is with professional development that they're gonna be responsible for and require they do, they'll all maximize the investment in the software and the packages that we already have.
So they're gonna do kind of a, a support role on what you're gonna maintain, once we purchase it or whatever?
Yep, and, and help, like it's, every month I wanna know, even if it's just meeting with the department, seeing what they do, any ways we can help improve efficiency, something has to be done, you know, every month for both of those positions.
And it's not a bad idea, man, where you're looking to, you know, add payroll and H R software, and somebody's gonna have to hold their hand and help them implement that. That, that's a pretty substantial project.
Yes, it is.
The certification software is gonna be pretty in-depth as well.
We just spent our morning up in Public Works showing the office staff there how to requisitions in. So it's, it's definitely a need for it.
Yeah, it's not that there's not a need for it, I guess, you know, you're looking at the number, it's not fifty-two, it's really, you know, sixty-eight to seventy. And then not including, you know, potential retirement exposure and things like that, but.
So Ryan, how did you establish the fifty-two, did you go to a certain job grade in the union positions?
Yep, so with the adult workforce having the different tiers, I took what we currently have for tier two and did it as a set one.
Okay. That's pretty accurate.
So with, Dawn, with the next two items, the cloud and the information security training, right, and that's something we're looking at, the compact grant possibly to do, we just haven't got a real.
Or the cloud backup.
The cloud backup, but the security piece is not under that.
Correct.
Okay.
So that, is this a one-time cost, or these gonna be recurring?
Uh, it, uh, they will both be recurring.
So next year there'll be a budget line item?
Yep, yeah, the, the security training currently is a budget, or in F Y eighteen is a budget line item, but to meet the, uh, budget guidelines, you gotta get cut. So it falls under the supplemental.
Wait, you already have this cost established?
Yep. But due to other increases, to meet the percentage, we're gonna drop it.
But back to the original, like this should be not a supplemental, this should be on his budget, and if it went to two point one, should have been.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know, other people wanna see it, I don't want it, yeah, I don't wanna see it as a supplemental, because it's a, it has, it's a real cost, we have to approve it.
In the, in the past, people have been given a bottom-line percentage number, and they would actually cut pieces of their real budget, their regular budget, to make that number, and then put those pieces in supplemental, but you're right, at the end of the day, you kinda need to have them anyway, because they're already a part of a working budget.
So that would beg, excuse me for jumping in, that would beg the, the thought that we need to, going into the next, a year from now, be directing department heads to, uh, level service. You add in your contractual obligations and level service.
And anything that is above that.
Then we have a much clearer picture.
Needs to be well documented.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay. So that's a necessity, it's already an established cost. I think I'm good.
Dawn?
Hi.
Kathy?
Pardon?
Mike?
What, I'm sorry. Yeah, what are you voting on? I didn't hear the vote.
We have voted, we're just asking.
Just, again, back to that top line, um, the fifty-two thousand number, that's probably about thirty-five percent more with benefits and everything else.
Everything is about seventy.
Right?
About seventy.
About seventy total.
Yeah, and I'm kind of hearing, it sounds like that it's doable right now, and right now, with the information I have, I would be more inclined to wanna revisit this next year, in line, try and keep this budget in line.
I mean, I look at it like it's, it's a tough one, because if you get. I mean, I look at it like it's, it's a tough one, because if you get the person in, by the time you hire him, acclimate him, and then we start talking about supporting the high school, I mean, the schools, you know, initiative with increasing that, I mean, his, his workload's going to increase anyhow. It's kind of inevitable. How can we not? You know, so I, I would tend to, uh, my personal opinion is that I would tend to want to fund that now. We're going to have to do it sooner or later.
I think it's legitimate to fund based on what we're expecting for increases in technology.
Right. I mean, there's some significant projects. If you do, you have to make a decision with, you know, payroll, HR, technology.
Could we visit it in January?
Or, or go forward and just start it up in January. That'll give them enough, still running time to acclimate before any of those other proposals come online, because we're not sure about the codification software yet when that's going to be available. We haven't addressed the accounting software. So yes, we're probably going to be doing all of that, but if it's not going to be in July and August.
Why would we try to put this into twenty-nineteen?
And I, I totally agree with that and I would, I would say that's a fair compromise. But, so what are you proposing with payroll and HR software? Is that something that you're going to try and move forward? Is it just payroll this year or is it to?
We'll do, um, I, I, after what you all have said, I thought that we would do an RFP that would do payroll absolutely and do, um, in addition, if, if they can do it, like an alternative that would include, um, HR as well.
Okay. Uh, and the reason why I'm asking is I think that Ryan's going to have to take a significant role. I mean, there's so much self-service technology, somebody has to teach people how to use it. Otherwise, it's going to be a giant paperweight on, and, and not get utilized correctly. So if, if you're gonna, by the time you're done RFPing and making a decision.
And implementing and all of that.
Starting implementation, you know.
Yeah.
You're.
It would be the half year.
Yeah, right.
And.
Does that help?
That RFP, what, once the product is eventually purchased, does, will that replace, be able to replace what we use MUNIS for?
It would be, uh.
Like a supplement.
Like an access layer. So MUNIS will be the core. Uh, we will depreciate our MUNIS self-service module that we have. Uh, unfortunately, it's, I think it's like three thousand dollars a year in maintenance, uh, which would then fall off our MUNIS contract. And, uh, this would be, uh, basically an access layer for employees. So we would get rid of our MUNIS self-service, which is currently our portal where they can go in and elect benefits. Uh, we would move to this new platform. But this platform would have to be chosen and have the modules to be able to replace that.
And they work in conjunction with it, yeah. You'd still need MUNIS, obviously.
Yes.
They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be redundant, because what you're, that's not their, that's not MUNIS's core competency. They're not great at it. They're not, actually, you, I wouldn't even consider them, whatever.
They're a good financial management software.
Great financial package, that's what they're known for.
It does everything good.
Right, yeah.
MUNIS pitch all the time.
Right. So I would be in favor, um, Ryan, if, if you can deal with that, um, to maybe have that position start after the first of the year. I would think it would be a fair compromise. And then we'll be able to scale up in preparation for the additional workload with systems coming online, with the initiatives, with the school departments and things like that. I think that makes tons of sense.
So we put in twenty-seven thousand? It's like twenty-six and something.
Cut in half, just, yeah, because benefits will get cut in half.
Do we need a specific proposal?
Twenty-six, two-seventeen.
Yeah. Okay, you got to figure out the day you can have that person start.
Happy New Year.
So I understand motion to, to approve, uh, supplemental budget one fifty-five, with the changes of fifty-two, four thirty-four to twenty-six, two seventeen. And the six thousand for information security training. So thirty-two, two-one-seven.
I thought that was going into community compact.
Cloud-based.
Oh, just the cloud, okay.
So the total supplemental, thirty-two, two-seventeen.
Second.
Moved it second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two-ten, police. First item is a proposed, proposal for a half-year lieutenant position, which is in addition to the management position to police department. This is, uh, some parity with what we have in other departments.
Okay, can I, can I ask a quick?
Yes.
Because I think the second part of what he's asking for is going to influence how I feel about this position. So would anybody mind if we kind of take the second page first?
No, I don't.
Because this seems like, based on what chief, you know, told us, that this was a necessity moving forward, you know, that we're going to have the community dispatch, so our, people aren't going to physically be sitting out there. You don't want to, you don't want a dark, you know, station. So this seems to be the more essential to me, if we have.
Let me, let me explain the, the whole picture. And, and, um, if we go to the combined dispatch, which we are headed that, in that direction very definitely, though the concern of the dark station is one that I personally have had issue with since we started this combined dispatch. Um, what, what this proposal would do is man twenty-four-seven, that there would be somebody there. Somebody, um, that is already there, she is the records clerk, would be up front in the daytime during her eight to four hours. So that takes away the need for totally new, new positions for that. The evening and, and nighttime hours and early morning are the ones that are sort of, we're not sure exactly what the need is. So this would be the high end of the investment. It's likely that at the end of a couple of years, but we don't have any statistics on it, that we find that between certain hours, we really don't have anybody coming into the station. If that is the case, by then we would be looking at an alternative to possibly have, um, a video camera that, that they would be fed right into the Hamden, if, if we're headed down the same direction, into the Hamden police station. They would be speaking to somebody, the dispatch right in Hamden. There would be a safe door kind of thing that they could go into, that, you know, if they're being chased by somebody, they wouldn't, um, there wouldn't be a safety issue. So that's the longer-term plan. But in order to get the combined dispatch going now, this is what we, we'd need to just man the station.
Part of this is mandated too, under the new Mass General law, right, in, in the future? The two dispatchers?
Yes, well, the, part of the reason to go to the combined dispatch is because, um, coming in the future, they, they want two dispatchers for a lot of very common sense reasons why you'd need two dispatchers in a, in a, a station. So that's what the combined dispatch will bring to the table, is that we will already be there without having to get the state, you know, hit us with a stick on it.
And, and Mike, you know, I've had a conversation with Mike about this and it makes sense, because if, if we don't go to the regional dispatch, then we're eventually going to have two people.
Right.
On dispatch at our facility. So when you look at the connect, that versus this, you know, the question is, how do, how do you budget for something that, like, so are you really going to go hire two full-time receptionists, three part-time receptionists right away?
Yeah, it's a twenty-four-seven operation.
Well, no, I know that, but you're saying you, you could scale up, this would be the high end of it. So I'm saying, is it all necessary?
Yes, yes. The initial is when we need to invest more and then we might be able to pull back.
Right, these numbers represent twenty-four, seven, no black station. And then that could be modified as time goes on. So this, as she said, worst-case scenario.
If there are better alternatives down the road, that we say, rather than have a receptionist there at two in, in the morning and they're not doing a single thing, maybe, maybe a certain gap of hours, we can just have it that they would remote into another, um, station.
Yeah, I, I would take it into consideration too, that, um, a receptionist is not a police officer.
Correct.
So, uh, you're not going to have that same level of, uh, security. And by having, um, a situation similar to Skyping, I mean, somebody could walk into that safe haven, be looking face-to-face at a dispatcher sitting roughly two miles away over in Hamden. And, um, depending on what's going on that night, you could have officers in the building as well.
And they call, they would call an officer to the station right away?
Generally, there is always a police officer in the station or there has been. And I really wouldn't expect that to change much.
Yeah. I agree.
So that, that's the, um, the one that has to do with dispatching. The lieutenant position is, is a deficiency that I've seen since I got here, that we have a very flat organization in the police department. We have patrolmen, we have sergeants, and then we have a chief. So there is no mid-level management, there is no other management. And no, um, training ground for a next chief, um, or anything like that. Nobody to assist with discipline. There's no layer between the men and the head guy.
Yeah, I would just, just to elaborate on that, I mean, there's, our six sergeants currently at East Lawn Meadow. And from there, we move right to chief. And there's, like you said, we don't have any redundancy. If something were to happen to him and he left for whatever reason, um, there's no in the draft. And the position, this lieutenant position, I mean, that could be a deputy chief, it could be a captain. It's, it's called lieutenant here, but it would really be, um, whatever position we feel is going to best serve the community.
But it would be, we spoke also about non-union and non-civil service.
Absolutely.
It's automatic to, to, I don't want to say it's automatic, but the discussion that Denise and I, self and Jeff have had, that that's our expectation that that's what that's going to be. Part of, um, not to get into next week's meeting, but part of discussions that Denise and I have had over the last probably month, month and a half, is succession planning for the entire town and every department.
And this is a badly needed.
This is sort of a, an example of where succession planning helps in the absence of a, a, an executive level type department head position. You're not having, you have an enabled body employee to fill the void, which then also that person, if Jeff, let's say, was to leave or whatever chief is to leave, you have somebody that's been sort of filling in that role or can fill that capacity well, the postings are out and so on and so forth, that we don't have to go without. And succession planning has been a big part of what we have done.
No, we've been very reactive, but, you know, I mean, and, and I don't, I don't disagree with any of that. And it seems essential to me and so do the other positions and so does everything else on here. But yet we're in a year where, you know, our, our assess values went up, our water and sewer rates went up, and now we're talking about a mill rate going up, and now we're talking about a supplemental budget. And at some point, it's not tenable. We've got elderly people that are in this town that don't use all these services and this is becoming problematic. I mean, it's, every year we're going two percent plus wish list and everybody's got a really legitimate case. Like it's, so when you look at them individually, they all make sense to some degree, more than others. I, you know, so that's kind of where I am. I mean, we're looking at, you know, I mean, it's, this is a pretty big ask when you add these, these two things up and, and.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Joe, on that one. I mean, we're looking at, if we're saying a dollar increase in the mill rate.
Yeah.
A four-hundred-thousand-dollar house is going to cost the average family four hundred dollars a year additional taxes at a time where, where gas prices are now three dollars a gallon. Uh, I'm just getting word from my mortgage broker friends that interest rates are going to be at five percent, which back in the eighties would sound good, but not right around now. So that's going to have a impact. Property values, we all can see, are going up. So, um, what I was wondering is, I'm not saying we shouldn't have the position, but can this be a promotion as opposed to a brand-new position? Can we take one of the sergeants, uh, and then promote the person?
A sergeant may apply for the position, but it would be outside of the union, so it, it might not attract.
Might not be attracted to our current folks.
You see, added the union position, which is not advisable, but if you added the union position as subject to bargaining, which the contract, you know, I believe already.
Yeah, so then you have.
But I know when Jeff applied for the chief position, he took himself out of the position, took him out, took him out of civil service.
But we replaced that with another sergeant.
So I'm saying if someone, if this is a pay bump to somebody within, currently in the organization.
But we don't have the position exist, that's the problem.
This is establishing that layer, which is.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a way to, works to work within.
I, I think, yeah, if you need six patrolmen, I, I want to say six sergeants, but think about, one of those sergeants is a court officer, pretty much. So you're, you're kind of down to five. That number was constituted on, um, the number of patrolmen that are on the street, so that, you know, that's, that's where the management comes from for the patrolmen is from the sergeant. And we're looking for a level of management to manage the sergeant, so that the chief can work on, you know, other priorities and free up his time.
So if we, if we cut back on that next level to increase the management layer, we're just creating a deficiency at the next level?
And if you look at other surrounding police departments, anyone that carries, um, you know, three to five sergeants, there's always a position in between. If we look at our neighbor and community law in Meadow alone, there's two positions. There is a captain and a lieutenant. Just to jump down to the regionalization part, I look at that more as an investment than a drain on the community. I mean, we're investing in something that's going to be coming at us, um, you know, from the state. And if we do this and we do it right, then it, it could be a wash. And bringing in a third community down the road, when you start replacing radio systems and things like that that are seven-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, could, it amortize between three departments would be much better than it amortize between one. So I don't look at, um, the regionalization as a drain.
Can we, uh, treat this similar to what we treat in the IT department position? The reason I ask is, we don't know the real impact in terms of, uh, police demands with the new casino that's opening just in a couple of months. We're also going to have the, hopefully, the new, you know, relationship with Hamden. So as opposed to creating these, you know, positions, can we revisit it in January?
Good, that's all he's asking for.
Yeah, the lieutenant position is on.
It's a half-year from now to January.
Right, it's January going forward.
If the position isn't filled, the money isn't.
Because we may have a situation where we're finding that we're going to have more demand on an officer, you know, and, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right. But, um.
We get mitigation funds for that.
We should.
Just a half-year salary. And if the salary never came about, then it's not, it's not special, so.
My thoughts on this are, I, I, I see both sides of it. And I, I agree with Joe that every, every dime we add to the budget creates a burden to our taxpayers. Uh, I've got an idea later on, which I'd like to recommend, to maybe offset some of these additional costs. As a, a twelve-year member of the Western Massachusetts Police Association, I've had the opportunity to work with many departments in Massachusetts and to echo Mike's comments and Kevin's, they all have executive positions, that, all of them, not barring one. So this is a position that's been long overdue and, and necessary, but it is a, a high cost. But again, uh, if we can move forward with some changes to maybe the revolving funds in, uh, at the end of our discussion, then maybe there's a way to fund some of these.
And we can also look at removing certain things.
Yes.
All right?
Yep.
Everything on there doesn't have to necessarily be approved.
Like the chair?
Correct.
For a thousand dollars?
It's a desk, ain't ya? One or the other.
Oh, this is dispatch expansion.
So three part-time receptionists, he should be getting about a salary of ten thousand bucks a year. Three times that.
No, no, that's total.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I'll mention this, just a thing I know on capital.
It's a good point.
Was that the department's also looking for a vehicle. So we fund, we could split the difference and say, okay, maybe we give the half-year supervisory position in those other expenditures and we don't fund the vehicle issue.
In the police? We've already, they asked for three and we already brought it down to two.
Chief vehicle. Not the patrol cars.
But that's, we've taken that.
That's out.
Oh, you've already taken it out?
So we just have two patrol cars?
That sounded like a good idea when you said it.
It's a lost idea.
It's already done.
Strike one.
All right, forget that idea. Guess we're back to the thousand for the desk.
And there's no way to get, I mean, I understand the need for, it's twenty-four, seven. And so the way that they calculated the coverage, they need all five positions?
And it's really doing it at a low end, um, it's a, it's truly a receptionist. They'll be doing other stuff, but maybe like filing or, you know, nothing. So it's very low pay, you know, it's the entry-level pay.
It's not the, not just the pay, you know, it's back to the benefits. It's not just the pay, you know, it's back to the benefits.
Yeah.
That's why we went to three part-time.
Two.
Two full-time, three part-time.
Two full-time people on benefits, and what union would they fall under?
TEU.
TEU.
You got $80,000 salary for 24-hour coverage times 52 weeks a year, so it's not dollar-wise...
No, yeah, it's not, yeah, I know, all right, all right, I'm good.
All right, so I'm motioning to approve the 210, the police supplement budget.
Some move?
Second.
Moves in second, all in favor?
Aye.
220 fire. 15, 497, this is the increase in the 19-hour administrative position and 30 hours and change in pay grade. This is staffing services increase with the ambulance service. I know we had discussed this sort of generally at the last meeting, and at some point, you know, this position becomes benefit eligible, that there will be possibility, Paul, that this will be defrayed at some point by the payments from the ambulance, correct?
Correct.
So this is sort of initial expenditure, and we'll look at, it actually ends up saving us money down the road, really.
Right. Ultimately, the revenues from the ambulance will hopefully go into a, some type of revolving account. That's for Denise, Sarah, and I to arrange and exactly determine how that's going to work, but that's not, that hasn't been outlined yet.
Chief, do you, down the road, when we're in full swing, based on similar models in other towns, do you, how much, I'm trying to frame this in a succinct way, the revenue we might see by running our own service and doing our billing, would that, down the road, offset the cost of this increase here, do you think, or are we...
Ultimately, the goal, the goal with mirroring similar communities, on Meadow, it's 25% of their entire fire budget, which covers their admin that handles this work, plus firefighter positions. They put money into a capital account that helps fund the dispayments. So their, I think the number for them is $550,000 if they're operating, plus the amount that they put in for their capital annually. Wilberham, their entire ambulance budget, they divide their fire budget two ways, their entire ambulance budget of $800,000 is covered by the revenues.
Okay, so that would be a yes.
So again, this is...
So this is a frontload investment on what we know would probably be only less than a fiscal year away to start seeing some net value to it.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be some income coming in.
Yeah.
I think with the letter I wrote to my internal letter for my budget, that Denise has, and if the number was $150,000 coming back towards the town.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Also, I mean, the increased hours is about clerical, too, isn't it? I mean, organization of bills pertaining to the ambulance?
Correct.
Compiling that information, and then those actual bills will be outsourced to another entity that...
Right. The software that, actually, Ryan and I have been working on a lot the past couple of weeks, the software that we purchased, has interfaces with the billing company. So once we select the billing company, in a couple of weeks, we have a bid opening for that, once that's selected, that link interface gets connected. That part is pretty seamless, it's the back end of that, after the collections are made, or actually, the collections aren't made, and it's reconciling the differences between, hey, we've done this much, and you're only billing this much, we need to, so everybody needs to be on the same page, so...
Yeah, so it sounds essential to me, if we're going to put the ambulance, you know, put it working for us, then we need to reconcile the paperwork that goes along with it.
Just the additional staff requires more work of this admin person to do payroll and support double the staff.
Going from nine career to 21 career, we're at, we're at 12 people, so it's a big, it's additional workload.
My comment here would be, I'm all for supporting the chief in regards to the ambulance service that's going to come online with the town. I think that's going to be a valuable service that we're going to be offering. My concern is, we're talking apples and oranges. If we fund this position, it becomes a permanent part, full-time position, and we can no longer fund it out of revolving funds if we're going to go that way in the future. So once we start it, we can't stop it unless we remove a person from that fold and put them into the revolving fund, which is only allowable part-time.
But we could fund other fire department-related items from the revolving fund, so it still gives us a revenue stream to offset some other expenses that could go there.
There's different ways to set that account up also, and Sarah's actually, or I'm talking about, necessarily, it might not be called a revolving account, the funds can go into an account specifically assigned for the fire department, and there's special requirements with that that we're looking into. So that, once it gets into that account, basically, it's a matter of approving it in the annual budget, so that's...
So it's more like an enterprise one?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay. When was the last time these firefighters have actually had an increase?
I believe the date was 2015, and like, Councilman, not Selectman, sorry, Paul, Federici said, before that was about 68 years before that, and that was, I believe, a 3% raise. So, and Denise and I have talked, when I submitted this, we're going to try and keep it in line with what the rest of the groups are getting. They can't negotiate, they can't come in and talk to anybody.
But we need them.
But they're valued as a supplement.
And what are they making an hour?
Firefighters make 12, 10 currently, lieutenants are 14, 38, and captains are 15 and change.
If you go into a burning building or hazardous situation...
And one of the lowest around.
It's embarrassing to talk about.
And then they don't get paid unless they're on or they're trained.
All right, so I'm motioning to approve 220 fire department supplement budget.
Some move?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Time out.
Just real quick.
Sorry, no.
Take a five-minute recess.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's call the meeting back to order.
This is dump fire.
Need to tell about it.
So we are 300, something of a budget, 300 education, move for $63,000 for a special, excuse, intensive special needs teacher, grade nine to 12, $63,000 for an instructional technology specialist, $12,000 increase in the 100.8 band music to a full-time employee, $65,000 special ed teacher with training in social and emotional support for grades six through eight, $63,000 is a master specialist intervention teacher in grades three through five, and $25,000 increase in curriculum renewal line item. We can move forward on this discussion now, if people have lost input.
My recollection from last week's meeting was that Mr. Smith said he had these prioritized if it came down to an actual, and where did I put that? Oh, yes, so...
Do you all have this?
I have that, right, so should we be looking at this instead of what you gave us this morning?
Yes.
So we should be looking at the one that has blue and white in it?
I don't really have a say over the school side of it, so I don't, you know...
Yeah, that's one. Yes, so they are in order, well, no, not exactly.
So if I'm reading that correctly, the third priority, support for social and emotional challenges, would be funded through the out-of-district tuitions, is that what's being said? Am I understanding that correctly? So that really...
That's why it's not highlighted on...
Okay, so the funds exist, you're just making a ledger move.
Because within that time, we showed you that we tried to make accommodations.
Right, okay.
That's for which one, Kathy?
Number three, they're just moving money...
Yeah, that's not in our budget anyway.
No, it's not really in there, right. I would, only because I am familiar with some of these circumstances, priority five, the .2 music band teacher, increase from .8 to 1.0, that individual is serving two schools, and so technically, it's a .4 in each place, and we have a fair amount of students in both of the grade three to five schools who get involved in instrumental music, actually, it starts in grade five. The individual has been in the district for many years, unless I'm speaking of somebody, we're talking about...
She's retiring.
See, that's what, that's where I was going. So she's retiring in this present coming year?
Correct.
Okay, so...
This will be for the new hire.
So my statement was going to be that sooner than later, we're going to be looking at a retirement, and it'll be very difficult to recruit a .8 individual who could probably get 1.0 work in a neighboring district for the same kind of money. The individual retiring is probably getting benefits, and so we're not looking at any benefits there, and it's, my, these are my words, cheap investment to bring, to fulfill the, to make the position whole, and to do an increased job with both programs.
Makes sense.
I would support that.
Yeah.
So if somebody is retiring, is the new person coming in at the same level?
No, the new individual would come in at a lower level.
Right, so it might even be a $12,000...
It might be, yeah, exactly, and it's hard to predict that, and you don't really know that until you start looking at a candidate pool. But the individual who's retiring is probably at the top of her schedule.
Right, so...
But essentially, we're going to...
At the most, it's going to be, well, maybe that's already been figured in, I don't, I can't speak for that.
How long are we looking at before she retires roughly?
She's retiring this year.
So you're looking at, needing to make that hire this summer. Do, or Greg, is the $12,000 already prorated for bringing an individual in at the lower end of the scale, where some of the less...
The $63,000 is a master five, and so if you take 20% of that...
Gotcha, oh, okay, I see what you did, all right. So conceivably, it could be less.
It could be less.
You might see...
Probably be funded about the same level as we did this year, if this school would require, and at 1.1 MTE instead of...
Right.
But essentially, with the school budget, if it's less, doesn't matter, they, we're approving, essentially, we're approving $12,000 and...
But it won't be any more than that.
Right.
Right.
If it is, then they'll have to move it around and do what they do, but it probably shouldn't be, but it's a little different, because it's a school budget, so they're going to use it how they use it, right? It doesn't matter.
No, I look at it as your, oh, I see.
Because essentially, they could just give us a gross number, and we either approve it or we don't.
All right, you can look at it that way.
I guess, yeah.
I mean, ideally, it's probably still going to wash out at the $8,000 or $9,000 level I want to make a statement about number six, increase in curriculum renewal line item. I can almost repeat verbatim what Valerie Aneer told us last year when we, when I asked the question, because you needed $50,000, because you kind of got blindsided with the AP program and needed to front-load some expenses there to be able to stay inside the AP program for our kids. Would that be a recurring expense, because we can't do that every year? And her remarks were, no, it's a one-time, and we'll make do the next year. So I'm going to stand on that and say, I don't support it. And that's hard for me to do that as a career educator, but we're bleeding money here in this supplemental budget.
I didn't know for a fact that that was in conversation.
Well, it was on camera.
Right.
Kathy, can I speak then, or to the chair?
Go ahead.
So my recollection of last year, and I know we had requested an ongoing curriculum renewal increase, and it was decided that it would just come out of free cash, but the request was originally to put it in the budget, as we're trying to do this year, last year, but the decision was made to fund it with free cash and not to put it in. So the need is there for an increased curriculum renewal.
I don't disagree with that.
Perhaps we should talk about the AP part of it, but there's certainly a need, and we asked for it last year, but we just funded differently through free cash, certainly a need for an increase.
Mr. Thompson's correct on that, where we ended up taking it from, but, and I don't refute that, there's always a need in curriculum.
So there's always a need in curriculum, why are we asking for a supplemental budget?
It's an increase from our current line item for curriculum renewal.
But why does it go with current items?
The same philosophy that...
That all the departments were starting on that form.
Greg, do you know what that line item is currently? Do you know what that breakout is?
It's 100 now.
$10,000.
Because if you look in the far left, it increases to 125, it's not 100.
It's increasing to 125.
And so what, from the 100 that's already allocated in the budget, what more would the, what more would you do with the extra 25? What would it go to?
Curriculum renewal every year, textbooks, some licensing fees, and they're expensive. So there's times that we'll try to find money to supplement that, there's times that we stick right to the 100, because that's all we have in the budget, but there's always a need for more than $100,000 curriculum renewal.
Got it.
And that's just, I mean, we can talk about textbooks and age of textbooks, going to high school, there's no question we're not being frivolous on curriculum renewal with some old textbooks that we have in the rotation, so it's already six years planned out, this is next year's...
Yeah, there's a five-year renewal plan.
Understood. So would this be a fee, would this be a $25,000 every year?
That's what we're asking for, increase in the line item to 125.
Well, that's next year, one-on-one to buy a device, a computer for every kid, grade three to 12.
So does, does the, if I can frame this correctly, but we talked about computers, and what, you know, what I know of the plan so far, and what eventually is going to get asked of us, does that alleviate that in any way? Like, if we're using technology, or we started to get away from some of the needs for the hard-bound books?
Partially, it's not going there, and I've asked the same question about how it's moving along, and education's not there, although there is a lot more textbook online, but once you get into that, then you start paying licensing fees, and so it's, it can be a wash to some extent, whether it's a book or a license.
Okay.
With the electronic books online, you buy X amount for, you know, you buy so many seats to use the books, and that license is good for six years, and the book...
Sometimes it's bigger than six years, yeah.
Yeah, and the book companies have figured out, the first couple of years that was, it was, I was still part of that, and it was like, yippee, we can get all these kids online with one science license, and about a year and a half in, the textbook companies figured out their mistake.
Wait a minute.
And so it's always, it's more efficient to have it online, truly, and this generation coming up has been using keypads, is the minute they can crawl and understand, so they would prefer that, there's a lot of good reasons to have books online versus hard copy, but the net cost has now balanced out with if you were buying hard copy from a book distributor. It didn't take long for the companies to figure that out.
Yeah.
When is the one-on-one program actually going to come into play?
Another year, so, as Ryan's talking about, actually, he came to us when we did the presentation, I think you're going to do that for them some time.
Yeah, we figured we'd get...
After the budget.
So not the upcoming year, but the following year, to try to get to that point, that's the goal.
Wilson, can you just give me an estimate, like the number on that?
Four something the first year.
Oh, that's Ryan.
It's...
362 the first year?
That was the number that we had presented to the school committee. We've actually tweaked it a little more, you know, my presentation, or our presentation to the school committee was, as I like to call it, the get-excited meeting, to really get everybody on board with the school committee, and really start the conversation that we have been having, and we've refined the number, it's, the numbers that we're going to present to you will be less than 50% of the school committee.
But we're still a full year out, so that's not on the landscape plan.
That's correct.
And that's the plan, is to make sure we have a fully vetted, everyone's on board, everyone's happy plan.
Everyone's happy plan?
How does that work?
So you guys want to take these, like, sort of individually and see if...
Are you asking?
Just generally, everyone want to take each...
Sure.
Sub little expense individually to see where we are as far as, I mean, the total ask is $291,000.
Just take like a roll call vote on each one?
Just take like a roll call vote on each one, see where we're at.
Yeah, so who's, let's start with the, if we're looking at the supplemental budget request, 300 education, $63,000 for intensive special needs teacher, grade nine through 12.
Mr. Chair, can I inter?
Go ahead.
So you're gonna take a roll on each individual item. It doesn't mean that we're gonna fund that item or not fund that item. I just wanna clarify that. So I'm not sure voting in favor of each position is gonna do because it's not, positions, does that make sense?
Right.
It does. I think what we're, yeah, I think what's, what's happening here, Greg, is that I don't know that anybody's gonna say yes to it all, but I think there's some, it's great in, in the sense that we're working in a collaborative manner and Gordon has broken these out for us so that we have something to discuss. Because if you just put a gross number in front of us and we look at your budget line item of $30 million, then it's hard to, you know, we wouldn't understand what it was for. There's justification here of what it's for. So again, like, you know, the comment I made about the $12,000 at the end of the day, if you guys do something different with it, okay. You know, I guess.
That's just my point, though. So say you vote to not support the intensive special needs teacher. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna have the new and special intensive needs.
How you guys spend it is up to you.
Yeah, it is.
I'm just being clear on that.
We understand that, but.
Yeah, we do. But it's, it's better than looking at.
But if we look at your prioritized, apart from the contractual stuff, that's a given. Number two, the special needs teacher at the high school, if we gave you XYZ dollars and you've told us that you prioritize this, wouldn't you start there?
Yes, we would. But my point is, if you, if the council, and I'm only using that.
I get that, yeah. We don't have purview.
Says we don't wanna fall on the intensive needs.
We understand that, right.
We're still gonna do it because they're our top priority.
Yes.
That's my point. So the rationale for voting each one individually, I'm not quite understanding, if we prioritize them, then perhaps you just go from the bottom and say we're gonna fund up to a certain level and then leave it from there. I just don't know if it's the council's responsibility to pick which ones we should.
No, no, we get that. I think.
But you're gonna do that, though, if you vote in favor of each one or not.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a, entertain a motion to approve $27,000 for the education supplemental budget. That's the increase in curriculum line item and a half, .8 music teacher to full time.
Well, can we have further, can we have further discussion on that?
I would like to hear from these two folks a little more about each one and where they, because they've had the prioritized discussions within your committee, correct? So they can, hearing about each one helps me decide for me, okay, I'm not, it's not our job legally to say, well, we want the special ed teacher, but we don't want the librarian or whatever. But it helps me come up with a number and then you play with that how you need to.
So I just want to start by saying, when it comes to prioritizing this, it's difficult because in fact, we need all of this. You know, it really is essentially hard to say even ourselves, even the leadership team, which are the building principals, to even prioritize. So really, the intensive special needs teacher is because we have students that need to be served at a higher level and they're coming from Burchlin, coming into the high school. We can't deny them an education.
No, nobody's.
But at the same time, how does that surpass curriculum renewal? Because that benefits all our students. So it's, it's really, this is what we need. And I don't know, do you agree with that? It's hard to say how it's prioritized?
Yeah, and then, you know, I think it would've been easier if Mr. Smith was here. I know he was at the four and a half hour meeting and we didn't really get into supplemental. So, I mean, I'm certainly willing to talk about it a little more. Is that what you're asking for, Kathy, just to go through the list or?
Oh, just to give us a little bit more background, please.
So as Deirdre just said, the intensive special needs is.
Because kids are coming from eighth grade.
Students that are coming from Burchlin, going into the high school, we have to fund that based on their IEPs. It's really not a question. So how, what do I have to do to fund that? Will be funded. The instructional technology specialist goes back to, as we were talking about, or you were discussing with Brian, the increased technology within the schools. This is basically for support to all the teachers in the high school to make sure that they're using the technology that we're providing to them. As you can imagine, a lot of them are slower than others to adopt the new technology. And if we're funding the technology, it's a workhorse investment to have someone coordinate amongst the areas on how we use that technology most efficiently.
And I just need to interrupt for one second, too. When we do this priority list, we also look, we try to give something to every school.
Each building, right.
So that's why I just wanna say it's hard to prioritize and that moves us on to, Dr. Atlantic did ask for technology specialists.
Last year.
In the past, yeah.
And for the rest of the council, my understanding, I look at that as not the type of position Ryan's looking for. This is not gonna be an individual who is going to figure out why the peripherals aren't working. This is an individual who is going to do the academic slash instructional side of using technology to enhance kids' educations.
Right, they'll help develop specific lesson plans.
Right, so it's gonna be, it'll be a lot of it based in professional development.
I was just gonna say that, for the teachers first and then they can get it.
So it expands their toolkit to deliver lessons that are appropriate and keep being competitive with 21st century learning.
It's an absolute key to the success of the.
Right, because you can buy all the fancy toys in the world. Unfortunately, we proved that a few years back with some grant money and the equipment didn't get used because the teachers didn't have the training to do it correctly. You always have the early adopters who just run with it and, and can train, it's the train the trainers model and teach other teachers, but you still need today with how most of, what kids need to do with their education is computer-based versus paper pencil. In a hard copy book, you'd need an individual. In a perfect world, you'd have one in every building.
And we talked about the need for that, so it's.
In the perfect school.
But we wanted to focus on the high school, all these older kids.
Yep.
And if you wanna move down to number five, I think that has been discussed, the music slash band teacher.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think that's, yeah.
Curriculum renewal, we're talking about.
Right.
Social emotional teacher. Again, I think that Mr. Smith had a point on this at the last meeting, the last time, that we're just finding, this is something that is just coming across education in the entire country. And we're just finding that we have students or we're finding the majority of social emotional needs right now are happening at the middle school. Yes, we would love to have programs that span all the grades, but I think we're starting with where we're finding we have the need the most.
And I, I took some time to talk with Mr. Allen, the principal, and I questioned whether or not he could, was there a different way to deploy the special ed staff they have now? And the thinking is, as you've said, that this is not just indicative of trends in East Long Meadow, but this is a trend across education that as kids move into puberty, all, a lot of other moving parts start to come into play. And so the spike in social emotional challenges hits anywhere between 10 and 15. And of course, if it's not addressed, it carries into the high school level and then you can layer on all of the other ills of society and, and then read the headlines in the paper and you see how they're all connected. But my sense is that Mr. Allen was moving, if this were to be funded, toward a standalone program. It's not gonna be services delivered by someone inside the mainstream classroom, that it was going to be a teacher who had the students in a separate classroom. Am I saying that correctly?
From what I understand, yes.
Yes, okay. Which means, though, when they age out of Burchlin, then we're going to need one at the high school?
Well, yeah. So, but you're right to the point that the data has shown that the amount of occurrences that is necessary in these positions are at the middle school.
It's a brain and physiological issue.
And it's today. It's, it's right on the front pages of the news.
Yeah, we don't have to read too far.
This is an attempt to address that. Definitely necessary. Then the math coaching intervention list, we have one that goes to two schools. Math being an emphasis of the district and the use of the coaches. We have ELA as well. We were just trying to have one at each of the schools so that the teachers could work together. And so they're all on the same page in terms of the curriculum and the math instruction.
So if we look at this in total, it's $291,000, but you have the $65,000 for the special ed teacher that is expected to be funded by, out of district. Is that correct? So it's really 226? Is that the way we're looking at this?
Yeah. Is this something where if we approve it, that money will just come, will come back to the general fund, right? It'll be, if it's out of district, that goes right back to the school, right? Where's this money flow?
Wherever they're saying they're gonna, I mean.
So if you get this money out of district, does that money, is it going back to the school system?
I think, I think it's already within our budget. We're just kind of moving it from one line to another to some, to, I think what they also have is some working against money, or was it, I don't recall this one off. I'm not recalling it directly, but it's probably already a line item that we have that they're just using that money towards.
If there's less, if next year specifically, I believe there's less heavy hitters.
Then he's still, they answer that?
No, I don't.
So essentially, the way we look at this is if, if, if you got zero, you're still funding that position. That should be considered. That's why I'm, you're, you're special ed teacher with social and emotional support, six to eight.
Yeah, so I think Gordon, I think he left it on there to show you, because we start our budget all the way back in like November. So I think it may have been started, but they still work on the budget throughout the couple of months, so they may have found other ways to allocate money and support.
I know, I know.
About seven, the.
I thought it was about three.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Person Park?
Yeah.
Social emotional teacher?
Yeah, three's not on our list.
Okay, I didn't.
Okay, sorry, 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 sorry.
You guys are looking at them, do I?
All right. Yeah, my mistake. Okay, so it is, it is a total of 291.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I say anything more? I, I don't, I don't wanna be coy about this, but I don't, when we're asking for this list, the list obviously was much longer than it was. So we cut it down to a point that we were hoping would be acceptable to fund all the positions. If we added nine, 10, 11, 12 positions in, in thinking that one or two might be cut, that would be disingenuous, right? So we put these in front of you thinking, these are the ones we specifically want. We don't really want to not fund any of them. So I say that in terms of, it's not that we're asking for everything. We're asking for what we think is manageable within this year's budget and what we really need, so.
So if, if we allocate a number, something different from the 291, are you able to move that number, use that number to appropriate where you wanna spend those funds on?
Yeah, we can always spend what's allocated by the council.
Right. So whatever we put out there, then you guys choose where you wanna delegate those funds.
Correct.
Thanks.
So I don't know how you wanna do this. Maybe start with, you know, more of an informal, like, is anybody in favor of approving 291,000 in a supplemental budget? And then if not, then maybe we can.
Let's answer that question.
No.
Joe?
Yes.
No.
No.
Kathy?
No.
Mike?
No.
So where can we, where can we get to? Can I ask you a question about the technology specialist?
Can I clear up the 291, though? That's before the 40, so it should be 251. Is that, are we on the same page?
Say that again.
291 includes the 40 for the support for social emotional challenges. It should be 251 is the number we're requesting.
Is that the same?
Am I right, Sid?
No.
No, no.
No, because we got 63, 64, that's 26.
40's on this list.
Yeah, we're working on this.
We're working on it, which doesn't have the 40.
Just so you know.
Yeah, but the 40,000 is not on the list.
No, we have, we have them both up here.
Our list does not have the 40, the 6100 or the 39,000.
Instead of 65, it has 63 on this list.
60.
No, there's two 63s. I don't have a possible list that you'll.
So the blue list.
There's two 63s and a 65.
Do you have a list for them to look at?
That, our list that we're voting on does not include the $40,000. It does not include the 6136 and it does not include clerical support for $39,000.
I get 291. I got 291.
Is this the type of, you know, 65?
No, we have.
65.
It's 291.
Down, there's three 63s and a 65 on this thing here.
Yeah, you'd say that the one they have here for math intervention list on the blue list is 65.
Minus the.
No, it's not. It's number eight.
You know what? I'm looking at that social emotional.
Yeah, it's number eight. It's 63.
Yeah, I gotta cross that out. Seven doesn't need a stripe. Where's this?
I'm thinking, I was gonna ask, we take this out, the technical budget until next year, the one-on-one program.
Okay.
It's coming down to how much money do we wanna delegate, what.
They have, they have the, we can't legally tell them what positions.
No, I'm trying to.
So you could just say $100,000 or $250,000 and it doesn't matter.
Right, and what they do with it.
Yeah.
That's the question I asked.
They.
Right, that's the answer. We understand. Okay, so.
Can, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just.
Greg, you don't have to ask that. Just speak.
Well, that'd be fine. I like to follow procedure.
You're the exception.
I, I think it sounds like we, it may just be an arbitrary number that we're looking for. I'm not sure why we can't just fund the whole thing. And again, I don't say it to be coy, but why don't we just put 12 things on the list and have it go to eight and then we call it a day, right? So we're presenting all the things that we believe need to be funded. To not fund them, just to not fund them seems a little bit arbitrary. I know we're trying to save money and such, but we're at 2.8%, I think is there.
Yeah, but I mean, Greg, let me, if I can just stop you there, because I'm trying to find a way to get to a happy compromise. You're, you're at three point something because somebody has to take responsibility for, what is it, the buses. It doesn't matter if it goes under yours or ours, you know, so, you know, you're not getting penalized for it per se, but you have the biggest budget line item and now you have realistically, you know, this significant increase and now we're looking at the supplemental. So there's a consensus up here that, you know, you're, you're asking for 291. They already said no. So now we've got to find, if there's any consensus to give you anything more, and then what you do with it, you do with it. So we're not arbitrarily dismissing any of these, because I understand there's a merit for all of them, but it's, we, we can't continue to debate it because they already said no. So now we're trying to get more than zero is what we're trying to accomplish at this point. Okay, so I'm sorry, I wish it was easier than that, but it's not.
It's clearly the largest department in any town, probably, in terms of budget. We signed on to selling the buses, so there's 507,000 there. We know that the one-to-one initiative, which is essential, now I'm talking like the educator, is essential, is going to, the outlay is gonna be at least 350,000 in, in the first year with a recurring 150 to 80 each of the subsequent years. I'm looking at Ryan and I'm just throwing ballpark there. But we know that's a significant recurring piece. A couple of months ago, we deliberately allocated 50% of our free cash into OPEB because we have all these other obligations to fulfill. And OPEB doesn't help anybody right now. Anybody that's on the payroll right now doesn't help anyone. Those are the post-employment benefits. Again, another one of the Commonwealth's wonderful unfunded mandates, that if you work for a municipality, you have insurance benefits until you are no longer here.
Needing benefits.
Needing benefits. So I, I feel like we're doing, we are addressing to the best we can in stretching the dollar, the largest department. And we, I'd be the last one at this table to refute the need for any of these positions.
Is there a number, Kathy, that you would feel comfortable with?
Don't be hanging this on me.
Well, I mean, I ask all of you, like.
I'll fill a number out.
I got one, yeah.
I gave it a little bit of thought here, okay? If we were to fund at least two of these positions here, two of the higher-priced ones, plus the bandleader, and, you know, it's kind of almost splitting it. That, two at 63 and one at 12 is 138,000. So I'll put that on the floor to start and see where you guys wanna go with it.
Mr. Chair, is there a recommendation from the town manager? Mr. Chair, is there a recommendation from the town manager? Can, is that allowable, that the manager can recommend what we should get for a budget, and then the legislative decide on that?
I, I...
No, because your recommendation is...
So I, I can answer the question, and, and it is what Kevin is saying, that my recommendation doesn't carry any more weight than what the council is going to decide. And, and to your point, at the end of the day, whatever they decide doesn't, you know, you can use your money however you want. So my recommendation to them is, is one of two ways, to either take positions that you feel are appropriate and give the, give the school board that message. That doesn't mean they take the message. That doesn't mean that they fund those, if you were to pass what, what Mike is saying.
I'm trying to find some common ground.
But, but that doesn't mean, as they've stated, that that's what they're going to use it for. But there's some logic behind how you got to the number. The other way to do it is to say, we can't fund it all, we're going to fund half. And, and it doesn't go to a particular position.
It goes to how they need it.
Right, so...
We've beaten that horse.
Why, what's the reason we're picking half for that?
We have a $30 million dollar budget.
You know, the manager is, though, she's, you are the one that knows both sides of the budget, what's requested, what's coming in. And so as the town executive, why is it not a presented proposed budget and discussion amongst the proposed budget amongst the legislative body to say, this is my recommendation, take it or not take it, right? Because it seems like...
Yes, this is my recommendation.
This is the recommendation.
Are they all recommended?
Yes.
There's no, what's the recommendation on the school budget? To fund all the requests?
The supplemental, yeah. That they, that they are making decision on.
This is the proposal, we're the ones who do the recommendations.
So I guess I don't understand what's the...
Listen, I'm not going to argue about it. It's a $30 million budget, and you're asking for another 300,000. So we're not funding $300,000. That's just the bottom line. And we've done it with every single department, we've gone through it line by line with everybody else. You're no different. So that's where we're at. What's the number we're at? Mike, you have a number on the table.
I picked two categories where I'm hoping they can delegate those funds to where they want. I added two, plus the bandleader, it's 138,000.
But my thought is, we were told that these are the highest priorities, whether there's 12 items and so forth. I say let's, I'm, I'm throwing out there the first four items. The last two, as important as they can be, they maybe could be working. So the first four line items.
Which is a total dollar amount of what?
How can you get a calculator?
63, 63, 12, and 25, you're saying?
163.
63, 63, 12, and 65.
What?
The, the first four items on this sheet.
12 and 65.
On this sheet.
Oh.
Can you read them off, please? Because I don't have...
Sure. First item is 63 intensive special needs, 63 structural technology, 12,000, the point, increase to .8 music, and 65 special ed. Again, those are just based on the first four priorities.
So that's 203,000.
Correct.
Right. It's what I asked for, plus the 65,000, an additional 65 for another department.
I would support that.
Paul?
I, I was actually thrown in the curriculum renewal, so I was up to 228. I feel like Monty Hall.
Would you support it too?
I think there'll be, we will, because...
Yes, Kathy.
I, I would support that.
Judge, ask Kathy. Kathy?
I'm voting on what, the 203?
Yes.
So I'm dictating a motion to approve 203,000 for item 300 in the supplemental budget request for education.
So moved. Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then we will draw the open motion. That was on the floor, 427,000.
Thank you.
Library, no, highway, I'm just sorry, 421.
If I may, these are all necessary unfunded mandates, so...
They are.
Discussion is a...
And there's been a lot of thought that went into how to do that the most cost-effectively. The two interns are a low-end solution to something, rather than hiring a, a firm that would be doing it at a much higher cost. So this was really thought out a lot.
I think Bruce went through this at our first meeting, at our first, at our budget hearing.
Probably.
Okay. Is there an actual motion?
Motion to approve the total expenditures of 421 as listed on the supplemental budget request.
So moved. Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Library, just want to remind everybody, the library came in, one of the only departments last year that came in under budget that we requested.
I do have one question. So it's a 25-hour position, it's already benefit eligible.
Correct.
30-hour position, like, so why not just make it a full-time, full, like, 37, 37.5?
I, I was looking at that, and in order to stay under this year in my request, talked about it with Sarah, and we thought that 30 would be a good place to start. We definitely have enough work for the individual. If we did go to the full 37.5, it would put me slightly over the 2% requested cap for increase.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that, thank you for doing that. I would say, from a value standpoint, if the work is there, and we're already paying benefits, the incremental increase from 30 to 37.5, is it 37.5, or I keep making that up?
37.5.
37.5, then why not just, because I'd rather do that this year, and then you're going to come back next year and ask for seven and a half hours. So I don't know what the calculation would be, but I would be in favor of approving that as a true full-time position.
Basically, if you want a half times the 60, 270, so, so, 9,500 bucks.
Not huge.
I'm sorry, another 9,500.
Right.
I'm going to support what, what is being asked for.
Do you agree with that? Moving to full-time?
No.
30 hours?
I'm...
Joe's saying move the 30...
To 37.5.
To 37.5.
I'm, I'm agreeing what's being submitted right here. They're asking for 30 hours to go from 25 to 30. I would hope that you guys know exactly what you need, and it might, might help with the position. I don't know what people that are applying for, but they might have reasons to be home at certain times of the day and whatever, and maybe the schedule complies with their needs, so...
And this is a current employee, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would...
So you would know, you would know they're...
30 hours.
It, it does work for them, but again, she would be interested in the 37.5.
Yeah.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of moving the individual to 30 hours, and then next year at this time, if the needs are, I wouldn't have any issue whatsoever with making it the 1.0 FTE.
Right.
And I say that in light of our most recent department conversation. We just sent a department away, and obviously, the camera didn't catch it, but not very happy with the fact that we didn't fund everything, so I don't think we should be...
Which is frankly kind of annoying.
It is.
That, you know...
The camera didn't catch it, but that's...
That's, that's for another day.
So I would be hesitant to be adding position, adding value to a position, especially when the department head didn't ask for it, but, and that doesn't mean that we don't make it full of a year from now. I think the department head has done a phenomenal job with this library program and how she operates the budget, so I'd be in favor of going to the 30 hours. While I still have the invisible microphone. The $2,100, oh yes, it is invisible, to offset shortfall in materials budget. Did I understand, Leila, last week, you said that that's sort of tied to the maintaining the CW Mars subscription?
Correct.
Then that, to me, falls into the same thinking as the elections budget.
Which she wasn't here for.
Yeah.
I understand that, but if it's a requirement to participate in something that's statewide, that's enough, that's a given. That should just be in there, and you put in the number every year that has to maintain that subscription, and we deal with it.
Put it in the budget next year.
Well, just saying that we would support that, and it should not have to really ever be on a wish list, a wish list.
It's not an increase in a service or a position.
No, it's kind of like the maintenance fees on a license.
So basically, at this time, Leila, you're looking for 83.70.
Yes.
Right. So I'm going to enter, I'll entertain a motion to approve 83.70 in the library supplemental budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick? If I remember right, the bottom two came off of this.
I had a conversation with Donna, who is here, and she may want to update you, or I can tell you that the 42,000, I know is a difficult thing for some of you to swallow, that it is adding a full-time position. The comment was made that, gee, she's only been here four months, and already she needs that position. I talked to Donna about it, and I think we can rework things, and possibly, if, if you see fit to increase the part-time position, we can do some moving around of things, responsibilities in the office. That would give her some flexibility, not to say that she might not...
So we go from part-time to full-time?
It would be...
Is that our increase, instead of adding the full-time?
Well, it would be 35. So is it 35 or 37.5?
It's 19, right now, so it would be 37.5.
Yeah, because it says 35 on here.
Yeah, definitely.
So it's kind of a compromise.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
16, 354.
Oh, oh, the second item. Okay.
And so eliminate the first one?
Eliminate the first one, and eliminate the third one, and just go with the second.
What I'm trying to do is to free up the current assistant director, who does a lot of clerical work, and I want that position with myself out in the field more. And my first thought was trying to assess all the clerical, and I said, when I say clerical, I mean that's ordering, ordering uniforms for the associations, the sports equipment. There's just a lot involved with taking, again, that, that off the plate of the association. So my first thought was, is I would rework the entire department, in that I'd have two department heads, and then we could split, and we could, there would be three of us that we could interchange duties. And with the current structure with the, the other full-time position being a union position, I don't have that flexibility. So that's where my thought process was in the beginning. But then after Denise and I talked, I feel like that maybe we can backtrack into try some other things before we go to the next step.
And it's one of those departments that will, she and I will work closely together.
I have a curious question about the turf field custodial costs. Is that wholly under your budget for the turf field at the high school?
That's just when we, when we use it.
When you use it, okay.
It's DPW.
Okay, so that's coming out of a DP, all right, so it's a cost here, but do we have an actual, real number of what it costs to maintain the turf?
$5,000 a year for the contract to do all the maintenance that's required.
Got it.
To keep it, to keep it like under warranty.
I understand that.
But that's the filling and the beads and the stuff.
Right, the beads, the backfill of the sand.
$5,000 a year for the company to do it all.
And so on top of that, you would be assessed a fee for when your folks use it? Is that what?
Correct.
So it's really more than $5,000?
Having a...
Well, no, the cost charge is $5,000 for the maintenance, and it's sort of like rented out, I guess, for lack of a better term.
But it's a custodian that's there on site, correct? So when they're using, yeah, when they're using the field, they're sure that they're not throwing bubble gum. Oh, I understand that.
They're giving us access to the controller for the sports equipment.
Yes, yeah.
Right, so we know that from using the field, and, and apparently, I think that was part of the contract, the union contract, the custodial union contract?
Yeah.
Right?
This year?
No.
Yes.
It was in there.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Where that was agreed upon.
They had to be there.
Oh, that they had to be there.
To be there.
Yeah, I didn't know where you were saying.
Which is silly. It's just, I'm sorry, it is. It's really silly.
It's ridiculous.
So...
Yeah, because you got the DPW emptying trash...
And then custodian.
In, are essentially turning lights on, that can be turned on remotely. I mean, it's a joke. So, but it's not, it's not a funny joke, it's a bad joke. So something that has to be addressed going forward. But other than that, I'd support this. Absolutely. You guys are ready?
I am ready to entertain a motion to support the request for the increased clerk position from 19. It's going to go to 37.5, right, Donna? To 37.5, which originally was 35, but the compromise is going to be 37.5. That dollar figure will look like something over 16, 354.
So... Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thanks for showing up. Okay, so... All right, I'll be getting it. But for capital... Denise, on capital, we...
Yes.
In our budget for capital, we went to 1.13, right?
If you look at the, if you look at the first page of the handouts that I gave you, capital projects was budgeted at 1.103 for this year.
So if we're looking, it's down to the IT teacher device replacement in Meadowbrook High School, I believe.
So all of page one, you just gave us that today, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So it's all of page one?
Yes.
Is it one, was it 1.1?
Yeah, it was a 1.5.
1.03.
1.5 was not quite a two, but...
I know that.
More than a one. It was our way of kind of splitting where they were going to fall.
No, I'm sorry, it goes to the first one on the second page, DPW. No, I'm sorry, it goes to the first one on the second page, DPW.
That's a little bit more, by like twenty thousand more, yes.
Okay. So what we're actually looking at is the other items?
Correct.
So we're up through the generator?
Yes.
And now we're debating whether or not we should...
Spend anything over there?
Spend on the excavator and the garbage.
And the original budget presentation that you had for capital had the percentage of last year's budget that would be reflected. The current proposal for the one-point-one-oh-three was a decrease of nine percent from last year. So I think whatever after the generator that you should choose is kind of a bonus, and I guess at this point, I would suggest that we not go any further. That will help the bottom line, because we really have had a difficult time with the supplementals.
I'm all in with that.
That's the answer, mine to me.
I'm sorry, you were going to stop at what?
Stop at the generator.
Stop here, nothing beyond that.
So capital for this year will be one-point-one-two-nine.
I have a question, going back to earlier discussions on the software. Was Ryan involved? I mean, that's a big nut, the hundred-and-forty thousand for the finance package.
Yes, he was.
Was he involved? Was he supportive of that, or was that our platform?
He wasn't at the beginning, because I was unaware that people were not going to IT to get IT officials done. But once I...
You just wear fancy shirts.
Once I brought it forward, yes.
So I can, I can speak to that a little bit, just kind of going back to June of, or July of two thousand seventeen, when I had some initial discussions with Sarah, Corinne, I don't remember who else.
Was I even here yet?
No. No, you were not.
Swacker.
So, or maybe you were. I'm sorry, maybe it was a little bit later.
Three times.
Right, so essentially, essentially, we have no HRAS system, and we have roughly six-hundred employees. Trying to run an organization with no HRAS system is like extraordinarily dangerous. Embedded within the HRAS system is a benefit administration system. So essentially, we have a manual benefit administration system, and our benefit costs are massive, and our ability to comply manually with the Affordable Care Act, I would question anybody's ability to do that manually. So that's significant there. Then you have your true payroll engine, and then the, all the self-service capabilities that any modernized company would have for employment records, ability to act, so all that stuff. So nothing has been done, because we've had too many other priorities. So all they did was ask for information on what it could potentially look like if they outsourced certain, not outsourced, if they're essentially looking for software, for certain pieces of it. So nothing, no decisions have been made, no vendors been picked, no RFPs been renewed. So they're in extraordinary preliminary stages of evaluating, and that's as far as, again. So I would hope that nothing else would be done without Denise and Ryan being intimately involved in the process going forward.
That was my concern.
Yeah, right, so, so yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, you know, my point last week is these systems are so interconnected, I have an issue with not implementing HR and benefits, and waiting until essentially you're going to get to almost fiscal twenty-twenty...
Right.
To make that happen, to me, is, you know, cuckoo puffs.
Well, I don't want to take that personally, but...
Well, you need to apply it two, three times, so maybe that's...
And you do understand, that was with the guidance of HR saying, "I can't handle that kind of a change this year." I think if, and that's your expertise, it's not mine, nor is it hers. If, and Ryan is on board, we, it will be an IT-managed project, so that we're going to get the right thing, and we're going to do it the right way, and if it includes HR, and we don't have enough in the capital with this amount, we may be coming back to you, and just saying, "Look, for another ten thousand," or whatever it would be, we're going to get that module as well and get it all done at once.
Then you've done your due diligence, and then we do what we have to do.
And I would just say this, it's a catch-22. She will never have more time to do anything other than process paperwork if we don't automate this stuff. So there's a statutory compliance aspect that I'm concerned with, more so than, you know, her ability, like, because her ability to implement this, she's got to sacrifice time to implement this, or she's never going to have more bandwidth than she has now. She's stuck, because we're not giving her three more people.
Because she's constantly maintaining the paper shuffle.
And to just hire people and put them in a manual environment creates no efficiencies for us. It's just throwing bodies, it's like throwing a deck chair off the Titanic. It's not going to help. It's going down.
One disclaimer I would just want to add is, I haven't seen any votes or anything for this, so if there are additional modules, because one forty doesn't cover it, that very potentially could be a additional request.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, that makes sense, though.
Do it once, do it right.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it.
That's our motto.
I'm glad to see you caught on to what, past experience.
I was going to say, sometimes I don't know until I bump into something that it's broken, so...
Yeah, yeah, fair well.
Brian and I are pretty sensitive to that.
Make a motion to... Yeah, we make it. You want a motion?
Move the, move the capital budget?
Sure. I'll entertain a motion to approve the capital budget up to one-million-one-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty.
So moved. Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye. If I may, we're done, right?
Yes.
If I may, we're finished, just, I just want to thank the department heads, I want to thank Sarah and Denise for their hard work, and the board for all their hard work, because this, certainly as you've known, is a process, and everyone working together, we got it done, so...
If I may, though, when's the review of the revolving funds?
Do you want to do the revolving funds?
I don't know when we're going to do that.
You want to go now?
I mean, if we got the time, so...
You mean, we're here, or...
They were given to you all, so you have done to review them.
Do you have enough to review them?
Because you need a final, we need to...
We need to file...
So wait, what's the next meeting? We're not...
Thursday eighth.
But that's not the public open meeting where we're approving the budget, so we could do it next Tuesday.
Oh, right, okay.
Could do it until next Tuesday.
All right, that's fine. Public here is the twenty-second.
Spend some time there.
revolving funds are all self-contained, so it's...
But I know we had a couple...
We're talking about enterprises too, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just a general comment.
There's a lot of money sitting in those funds, and I'd like to see how they're being...
Right, yeah, we had some general questions about that two times, so that's a good point.
Let's do that next Tuesday, so that I can have the department heads there to answer any questions that have to do with the funding of the ones that are associated with theirs.
Do you really need to drag them there?
Well, Bruce, Bruce really worked hard on the enterprise, the enterprise funds, and that's important, and...
Okay, I'm just saying, all of them, I mean, they were sitting around for a long time.
Just the ones that have revolving funds or enterprise funds.
It's only like four. Nobody that's...
And one comes all the time anyways.
Ask him enough questions, so he'll get a second opportunity.
Awesome.
Tuesdays, Tuesdays are...
Did you got a picture of yourself making that face?
We don't have much agenda on Tuesday.
Did you check your microphone?
No. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.